I get on a Zoom or a quick or a text my dog. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. So. I'm trying to do this on my phone. We'll have to be quiet so we can hear what's going on. This is an additional website service text my dog is all about texting information. She has to put on a presentation, so. Here we go, if I can't get it, I'll just have to call her tonight and say we can do it. Not very good. Where the hell would you put it?
Followed by pound. Enter your participant's ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. Please enter the meeting password. You have not entered any numbers. Please re-enter the meeting password followed by pound. You have not entered any numbers. Please.
I did that already. I'm picking them up. Yeah, I take returns.
You entered nine, two, eight, one, four, five, five, seven, six, seven. This meeting password is.
It's not an action board. We'll try this one more time. After that, we'll just move on.
You have not entered any numbers. Please re-enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant's ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. Please enter the meeting password followed by pound. You are in the meeting now. There is one other participant in the meeting. You have been added to the waiting room.
Who's that Mike?
No, no, somebody that's wanted to give a presentation.
All right, we'll give her a couple of seconds there. Who is this? So this is, uh, this company is called Text My Dog and basically what they do is they set up on the website for texting and it allows you to text back, especially like in emergencies, like if you got, uh, you know, severe weather coming in or whatever, we'd be able to put it up on there. And, uh, it also opens up a line of communication by text too from the town to the resident.
Goodbye.
Bye.
All right, I guess I'm done with that.
Well, that was a good meeting.
I'll call Jessup that tomorrow. That's twice it's kicked me off because I set that all up before I walked in there and it kicked me off on the way in, so. All right, um, first topic's gonna be the discussion of town website. I know, uh, Pat too, today you're looking at, kind of giving us an update, right, of what you got going on. And then after that, we'll go from there.
Well.
You want us to kill some lights?
Let's wait for one minute. Let's, let's wait. So. At the end of last year, it was brought to my attention that there was a lot of angst, a lot of concern with the website. And. That, that's been reflected. As early as July of last year, Mike and Reg, uh, live on the same day within an hour of each other, called me for an update. Awkwardly enough, uh, I was pointed to actually the recording. It wasn't until recently did I understand that those recordings are not actually those recordings, the town recordings. So I, I've learned that and I understand that now. But I was pointed to a meeting where the website was discussed. But obviously, I mean, you guys know, I, I haven't been here, right? I've never addressed you guys except for, last time I addressed you was when you guys agreed, voted on and agreed to the website contract. So. I wanted to, um, on the, I was shown a clip art from seven nineteen, July nineteenth, of which there was, uh, some discussion from Mike about, he talked to me, hundred percent true, um, that I had told him, uh, that the site needed more content. It needed, I needed to be given content. And. That was brought up at that time. One of the other things that he didn't directly, um, bring up here, but was part of that same conversation I had with him, was why is the, I, I was bidding to do the county fair website? And why was that so much more expensive than bidding the town website? And at that time, I gave him the explanation that the difference was is with the county fair website, I knew, I was guaranteed, I had to do all of the work. Meaning I have to be there taking pictures, you know, doing the grandstands, going to each of the vendor booths, going to like the four H and all the, the animal displays, working to, to gather the, the records, the information, the prizes, working with the fair office. I was literally going to have to do all of the work. It was not, to my understanding, if, if I am wrong, anyone can correct me. It was not to my understanding that that was how the town of Skyler Falls website was, was going to be. There was a little bit of transition and then we would. It would be, if I need it, I would be available for an hourly rate. But it kind of like, pretty quickly hit a roadblock when it came to like emails and logins and how, what was going to be posted and, and, and stuff like that. And then it just kind of like died. I have tons of communication with Kevin. My biggest concern is the only communication that I've had until December was with Kevin. That's it. And, and like. When I went back and looked at the July nineteenth video, the, one of the concerns was is what does he mean by content? If anyone would have asked me, I would have provided that in a nutshell. And then if anything was not understood, because at that meeting it was said, Kevin, like, you don't understand a lot of the technical gar, gar jargon and I did not realize I was doing that, but that's because I speak this all the time. By all means, if I'm speaking too technical and I, I'm going to guarantee you I will, just tell me to, whoa, bring it down, bring it back. So I want to start with that, that things were brought to my attention. Unfortunately, it wasn't until December. I also was informed that you guys were looking at other site, other contracts, other contracts. And so I also made a new year's resolution to basically just do it. Just, I asked for permission from you for some, a whole bunch of stuff. And I just, I, I was going to basically do what I wasn't contract, contractually asked to do. I was going to do it for the best of trying to get you guys what you want. Because one, I mean, I would like to maintain the contract, but two, you're supporting local business and to my understanding, you wouldn't be supporting local business otherwise. So I wanted to show you what the capabilities are. And I haven't touched the actual site that's up public. We can go back and compare and show all the differences and stuff. I also didn't want to take it down because of the postings for tonight's meeting and stuff. I didn't want to swap out to the new site, you know, the, the updated information until after hours, like after midnight. But I wanted to go through everything that I've done and also what I'm talking about with content. So before we turn the lights off. Sam, the, the one, the one guy that started off really good at like communicating with me was Sam. The problem was is that what Sam needed, I didn't have to offer him. And I didn't know I could, but I did ask Kevin, like permission, can I make some stuff? Can I, can I do what Sam needs? Can I do that for him and, and get it? Because on the old site, what was posted was, was registration forms and documents that were marked up with pen that were outdated from like twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen. Nothing that you would want to present on a new site. So with that, Sam had reached out to me January, like first part of January, first week of January, said, I need to get an announcement up for bowling. I need to get that up. And so I said, okay, let's do this right. One, we can get, get it posted. But two, something else that I haven't had is I haven't had access to the Facebook page, which was supposed to be something where articles get posted on the site, they get pushed to Facebook. Problem is, is that I never got added to the, the town's page. That has to be done by an administrator of that page. And I reached back out and I, I guess that's going to be orphaned because, or, or we'll have to go through some work to get access to it because the person who was the sole administrator of it, his account was hacked. And that was Rick, that's Rick. So unfortunately, his, his personal account that was attached to that page is gone. And he was the only one, so that is, is an orphan site. There's a process, it's a long process. He did have seven hundred and seventy-four followers. There was a lot of good content on there. And it would have been a great place to just keep adding content, but it's, it's not available. So I created a new Facebook that we can choose to use while we figure out if we can get access to the old site. I don't know if we can or not. But first and foremost, I created a flyer, a digital flyer, so that you could post it on social media. And nice, nicely enough, I've seen this flyer, in case anyone didn't see it. I actually seen it circulating now from residents of Skyler Falls. That's awesome. It was, said it was attractive, it, it, it looks good, it had all the information needed. That's perfect. That's what we want. That's what is missing is, you know, besides for a string of text, which from the old, the old website, which I have pulled up on the screen, well, I know it's hard to see right now. It's all just text, right? It's, it's all just text. Because that's what I get. Like I get an email that says, you know, bowling's Sunday starting January eighth from the, you know, like, that's not going to interest anybody. So I wanted to start doing that. Also, when doing with the registration forms, I have created like new sports registration forms, along with a corresponding, uh, liability waiver. It's, nothing legal has changed. It's identical to the old one, except it's just, it matches, right? Everything is, is, it doesn't have handwritten stuff in it. It's not a photocopy. And it's all universal. So those are things, that's what I was talking about when needing to create material, like being asked to create a form, which was never like kind of informed to me. I was never like thinking I was going to have to create these forms. So I've done that and that's been going well. Now we can go to the, to the website, to the current and the old, or the new looking website. So this is the, the current site and it was brought to everyone's attention, um, that all these links, they just don't work, right? There's nothing there. There's no page content. I, I know, I, I was quickly told that, you know, eight to four was like town hours. But I know that departments are not staffed Monday through Thursday, eight to four. So like some of the content that I still need is like, what are the office hours of the individuals? Something as simple as that, you know, like what are the office hours of the individuals in their departments and their respective departments? Do they want a phone extension, uh, program? Now, we did cover some of that at the beginning, but then that, from the people who've seen it, said, no, absolutely not. I don't have an extension at, at the town, just my cellphone. So this is the old site. It, it, nothing, like, nothing works, okay? This is the new site. So a bunch of new information I've added and I've put up there that is, is strategically substantially different. One, everyone, uh, had issues with, uh, the mobile, when it's on a mobile phone, you lose your menu. Now, when you shrink, so this is the mobile phone size, now you get a mobile phone menu that is capable of being viewed on any mobile device, as small as like an iPhone six, SE. When you come back out, you get your full, full menu back. The other thing is that this new design, i- i- it's not horribly different, it, it's, the functionality is different, is you can now click on the phone icon, the actual phone numbers. So like on Kevin's number, you see a little finger pops up. And when on a mobile phone, you can actually dial. So, so in other words, if I clicked it, it would come up to your phone and you can hit call and make a call right to that number immediately. The email now does the same thing. It's, it's mail too. It opens up your, whatever your default mail browser is, whether it be on your phone or on your computer, and it allows you to email that directly right away. And then now, everything does work. There is one, one bug in this, th- this right here is not public. It's on a development server. If you look at the top, which is actually kind of blurry, I can probably try to fix that. It says dot local, so it's, it's on a, a local development server. It's got to be pushed to the public site. So no worry about any, anything being seen or, or done before we all know about it. But when you click on about, there is, there's just history now. There, there's going to be more historical content, um, there's going to be some pictures. I have to get those digital, but Barb provided a paper document. I got the content, but I, I need the pictures digital. And so that will be there. The events, so this was a, a big thing. I don't, I just got this tonight. I, I was told that it was sent to me. I don't have any record that this was sent to me prior. I got a physical copy tonight. All of the board meetings, all of the events can have a spot on the calendar. So I got January and I have February listed on here. But all of, all of the events, whether it be recreation, you can make it green or, or some color and all the recreation events like sports, uh, practices, all that can be added. I just need the content or we need to have a training where you guys can actually enter it yourself. There's that capability as well. So this is, this is a brand new looking design. It gives you the, it's hard to see it. It actually gives you. Make it a little bit better.
That's about as good as she's going to get.
Back that table up a little better. You ain't got enough lead. Make it a little bigger for us.
I can, uh, I can actually maybe zoom in the screen. Does that, that work?
There we go. As you can see, it resizes itself to fit on, on your screen. So. You can actually, you know, make it bigger and see.
If we have like, we'll have our events down at park, the music in the park, we can put all those on there.
All those on there.
Our holiday festival, we got a hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary coming up for the town. So we're going to have a parade and, you know, some events out here.
And the sooner, the better. If, if, if they can be given to me, the sooner the better. I worked with Sam a lot and I, I, like I said, kind of like my new year's resolution to try to get in front of this stuff. I actually talked to him about his entire year of, of sports. And we have our deadlines. They're all tentative. They can all change. I can go in and change a date, but I have something to put so we can actually allow online registration. Last year, it seemed like always playing catch-up, like it was already started or, or practice has already started. So sport, like, like recreations, practice days, games, that can be put on here. Tire pickup day and cleanup day, those can be put on here. If Mike wants to provide data about when he's going to be sweeping roads, paving or sweeping come this spring, we can, we can block out multiple days of like, you're going to do this, this town or these roads. I'm not, I mean, kind of just do whatever you can get to and when, um, but if, if there's a section planned, we can, we can define that section and block it out.
Can I just?
Yeah.
I had a meeting with Sam Campbell today. And it's funny that you, I didn't, I didn't realize you could be here tonight. And Sam had told me that he had spoke with you, uh, about the registration forms. And that you've developed a, um, a waiver form people can electronically sign. So they can sign your kid up for a sports program, sign the waiver on the, the website. Sam, Sam seemed pretty excited about this whole thing. It's a big advancement for him.
And, and, and what, what he's talking about there is, so this paper waiver form, it looks new and, and, and nice. I'll show it again after when we turn the lights back on. The difference is, is this was created with this new software. It's not a photocopy from just like, like a piece of paper that was photocopied and it's just a picture. This is actually a text document where the signature fields are fields. And then you put it into Adobe and then Adobe has the feature, I'm not sure if, this is where I'm getting a little technical, but online, there's, there's fields. When you open up PDF, you can sign a document.
That's what he said. He said.
And that's now capable. If, if you don't know how, I didn't want to leave anybody out. If you don't know how to sign digitally, print it out and deliver. And, and, and see, it looks just as good, print it out. So I didn't want to leave anybody out. But it is available now digitally and that's, that's the new offering. That, that's what I was waiting for.
Is that using like a third party, like DocuSign or something, or is it one of your own programs?
It's actually just Adobe, right through Adobe. So Adobe, their DocuSign is the big one. Adobe came out with their own and that's what, that's what we use is the Adobe one.
So Patrick, I spoke to Sam as well, Sherman, and he was very satisfied with that form. But in terms of your hours, if we need to reach you for any reason, do you have office hours where we could reach you?
I, the best way to reach me is literally give me a call and I will answer if I can. And if I can't, I will call you back or text you saying, I will call you back. That's the best way to do it. That's a very interesting topic. Um, let, let's turn on a, oh, I want to introduce somebody. Uh, I wanted to bring, I want to bring all the resources necessary. Sorry, a little bit of warning I got made, my apologies. I wanted to give the town all of the resources necessary to do this as fast as possible. So I brought Rachel. She is a recent graduate from Clinton Community College. She graduated in web design. So, uh, she will be assisting me. She will be available. And basically any request if sent to email, she'll be able to get those. And any texts, I will forward on to her. Now, obviously, if you're calling me directly, it's going to come to me, but I can also hand things off to her.
So we're not going to keep on getting the four oh two or four oh three error messages on everything on that website?
There is, that's, that's the key here, is there is no, that's.
You know what, I mean, for nothing, I mean, we've taken photos, we've taken photos of the town, taken photos of the highway, but we've taken photos of the personnel down here. You've got our phone numbers. And literally there were like two phone numbers on that website. And they weren't even horizontal. They were like vertically split up weird. I don't even know how that even happened. But, uh, and it's, as far as content, you know, there, there's a couple of different times that I spoke to you about, um, getting down to do another training, so I told you to make it easier on you. I don't, there's nobody down here that has any administrative passwords to even put any content on there at this point, even though we've been with you almost a year. So, I mean, I don't mind. We'll get it wrong. If I can scan something to you the way we're doing it and you pop it up five minutes later, it's going to be a lot easier than me doing it, but at least if I needed to put something up, I could have the backup and I believe that at least two of us down here, the officers should at least have the, um, administrative powers to our own website, you know what I mean? So we're not, because God knows you could have a family emergency and not be available when we need something that goes on. And some of these grant stuff that has to be on, like I, I know I've, I've text you in fact, those CD forms for CDVG for three or four months now. And I know you said that you were creating a separate thing just for forms of, you know, just for grants and what's coming up on grants. And, and those things, there's things that are required by CDVG and I don't want to lose a two point five million dollar grant and a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, you know, housing redevelopment because we don't have what's supposed to be put up there, like the, the section three coordinator and the fair housing plan and those, those things that I've sent you to a few times and that's, I, I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think that's where the frustration came in is like, we need the website to be much more than what it is over the last few months that you've been working on. So, you know, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this. Uh, you, you weren't at a speaking on term. We have discussed other, um, web companies. Uh, because I'm telling you, I'm getting sick of getting pounded by the people here. And it's very frustrating for us sitting up here because we don't have even the ability to get on there and even make a change if you wanted to, because we don't have any administrative password. So, you know, those are things that, I'm willing to work. I think anybody in this town is willing to work to make sure that we can get the best website we can. The problem is that it's gotten to the point where we're so absolutely frustrated that that's why we were looking to go somewhere else.
Understood. Now, the cool thing or the, the good thing is the emails that I came in August and set up, those emails are your logins. So, uh, ke- uh, kevin dot randall at skylarfallsny.com. Now, I don't know what the password, we set it up on, on your computer, every computer.
I don't think we're using our names though. I think we were just using our offices when we first talked about it. It was like going to be supervisor at, you know.
So all the computers are set up with your personal name? So when people te- uh, email supervisor, it just gets forwarded immediately to kevin dot randall. That way. Kevin not Randall's no longer supervisor. All we do is we just forward it to someone else's. And then they have all of the history of supervisor, but they don't have like direct access. If, if it's required for FOIL or any kind of information, we can always go back into your personal content is there. It always will be there. But that person is not taking over the identity of Kevin not Randall. They have their own email. Whoever, whoever's next, you know, joe dot smith. And that way supervisor then forwards to joe dot smith. That is the purpose behind everyone having their own email. And then things like town clerk forwards to your town clerk's actual email address. The, the difference being is each, each board member, uh, I did not, I, I thought it was. The, the difference being is each, each board member, uh, I did not, I, I thought it was said, but I don't have any document proof. If it's on video, someone wants to show me, that would be amazing. But I thought, uh, we, we weren't doing emails for the, for the board, and that's why the board didn't have them. I actually delivered to all the board members that are here, and Mike as well. Um, I have emails with the, their login, their credentials and how to hook up. And my number is down at the bottom for support on how to hook up the email. And then, the way it is now, and the whole reason also for the redesign, I, I don't, I, I had talked to you personally about this, is that the limitation with the old design, anyone that had a town at SkylerFallsNY.com email address could change content on the, on the website. The concept was, is it was a simpler authentication, where only people who were knowledgeable would actually do it. Problem is, is that if someone unknowledgeable stumbled upon it, they could have taken down content or putting up, put up, you know, not so great content, like, like missing things or not formatted or, you know, missing files. So with the new design and the new site, things are permission based. So recreation can only tou- touch recreation. So the concept that we wanna do is like digital signature, but also to register online. Then Sam can log in and all he's gonna see is his sports. And he can see all of his, his, uh, registered youth and what, what they signed up for, whether it be, uh, baseball, T-ball, softball. But that's all he can do. We, we don't have to worry about, you know, the, the agenda postings or the files. Um, Town Clerk should be able to post up any files, but probably is not going to be, you know, actually creating sports and then doing stuff like this. So now there's roles. That's the difference. It was a little scary, a little while less before, now it's, it's much more silent. So, the proposal that I, I wanted to come, there's a lot of work. I, I have this, in a matter of two weeks, there, there is no more 404s anywhere on this. JCEO on the old site, I, I wanted to take a print off. A, a 404 error code, yeah. So basically, it would come up and say.
You click on something on the website?
Actually, we, we can, um, let's, let's do it, cause it's still the old site.
I clicked on it on there, that's what I got, was a error.
There, there you go. 404 not found. That is the current site that's up.
And that's what you get with everything, other than what I scan, send to you, and then make sure, I always follow it up with a phone call and a text, just to make sure I cover all my bases.
Yep.
Um, and you can attest to that.
Yes, I.
Because.
Phone call, text, email.
Every time I do that, I hit all three.
My question is that when you gave us all, uh, emails, my email doesn't work.
So that, that's.
Nobody's email in here doesn't work. Nobody, I, I, you know, the, the one that you had says, "Operation cannot be processed." So I can't click on my, that email that you gave me in July.
Was just literally last week, I think, is the first I've heard of it. No one's, no one's communicated that to me until now. But I can gladly do it. I was also told that some were even removed because of stuff that, like, new users are on it, so it's gone. Um, so, all this, the only way I can actually fix that or, or assist is if I know it. Um, by all means, before we leave, let's schedule rest sometime this week. I'm not sure your availability. We'll make sure it's functioning, because what I can tell you is I can see there is mail stacking up. And, and that's concerning, at the very least, because there's, there's users trying to reach out. And something that's always been there is like info. Info goes to the Town Clerk. Um, you know, that, that's been on the website since day one, and I did not know that no one's getting it, cause it is, it is receiving mail. I can't, unless I looked into logs on the entire server and knew to look for you, I wouldn't know if you were accessing it or not. And it could be like, every time a device logs in, you know, whether it be your phone, your computer, you can have it everywhere you want, or you can have it only on your work computer. So, we can handle that, and we can handle that this week. And if that, do, do you know if yours is working? It's underneath?
No, I don't think anybody's is working.
One that I've used since three years ago, the SF Supervisor Outlook dot com. And that's how residents contact me, that's what they, they use. So it, it's gonna, it's gonna be a, a time lapse here when we start switching over to a new website, uh, excuse me, a new, uh, email that people are still gonna be utilizing the old one, so we're gonna need to keep that. And then as those emails come in, say, "Okay, please use, you know, new emails such and such for any sort of correspondence." But that's, that's gonna take months, you know that.
Yes. Yeah, one of the things that you could do is, um, on, on your signature, at the bottom of all your emails, change that so that people are clicking that. That'll go through the Outlook system and, and start posting that up to. So, the big, the big key here is there is no more whatsoever anywhere on the site, any more 404 errors. Events has got the calendar.
So what do you got on your highlight now? Do you have the picture of the trucks and the building up there and Mike Snyder as a highway superintendent and his?
For departments, I have Supervisor, I have a page with his content right now. And conceptually, the, the idea, it's gray right now. I, I have the trucks all lined up that Mike lined them up last year. I should be able to get that up there before next Tuesday.
Okay, one other thing too, is that everybody has complained, is the minutes. Now, I know you took a file from me last summer and nothing's ever come up on my minutes.
Yes. So, I have, I pulled last year's minutes up until August. And I have them on the server, and when we go live, where they will come is underneath public records. So, actually, let's, let's review this real quick.
Now, before you got off of that, is that Mike set the highway site that you just showed?
That is correct.
So you're gonna wanna change that to highway superintendent?
No, sorry, no, no, highway, there you go. So, the, there's some changes, because I don't have the content to give. I, I put things and I did what I could with what I have. So, before there was about, there was like facts and elected official, there's a lot of content there, but what does it mean to the users of the town? Like, like what goes underneath resources? So, as you can see, this is the old, old site look, and the new site actually has public records. Underneath public records, what is showing right now are all the categories, and we can add more categories as we go. Th- this is where you will have a record of everything posted. Now, I pulled twenty-two up to August. I'll need August, September through December. Do we want to, do you want to post it yourself, or is there like a, imagine you send out the meeting minutes to everyone. Can you add me to that distribution list and I?
We don't email them, we give them in their little boxes.
Physical copies, okay.
I, I mean, I'm just scanning your stuff. I can show her to.
Right.
How, how to scan it, I mean, it's pretty simple.
I, 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 I don't wanna, uh, scan though, like an image scan. I actually want the, the dot doc. So, just go to your email and attach, and then attach the actual file, the actual Word document.
Your email, you mean? That's a, I mean, and then I can, like I did, used to do to Rick.
Rick, exactly like Rick.
Yeah, and then just attach files and send them. That's fine, as long as they get up there.
Perfect. That's, that, that is actually it. All I ac- actually wanted was exactly like Rick, and I can have it up, same day I get it, I'll have it up within 24 hours. Um, that's, that's not a problem. And so the proposal is, is to let Rachel help assist and, and basically get this done as fast as possible. So me and her, we'll double team the site with all the content. I'm hoping we can get basically as much done as possible for next week, for the next meeting. Maybe come back and just reiterate, show the improvement, show what's done. Um.
Yeah, like even my website, uh, you know, my page, you know, I used to have, uh, you know, supervisors update. And I'd, I'd been pulling it and stuff, I would put her information and that was a little, one paragraph blurb on there and what's going on. Or even in the case where, you know, we have projects going on, whether it's a water project or whatever, hey, new update on Marcell Water Project, we just received $2,560,000 in congressional funding. So, you know, those things should be posted on there and.
I would love that. Uh, i- if you give them to me, I would, I would love it, because that actually fits the news tab. So that would be like, from the supervisor. We can like, we can make a, a category called from the supervisor. Everything is categorized, so you can have a whole history of all the supervisor updates that we post in our news articles.
Back in the old days, before computers, we used to have what they called a, uh, Town Skyler Falls Newsletter. Came out quarterly down there. And Town Clerk, all her issues, uh, dog control, uh, anything like that. Highway superintendent, what, what was gonna go on with his, Town Supervisor, Councilman, uh, the youth. Everybody had, you know, a chance to put all the things that were going on in their department into this newsletter. And I think that's basically what you're saying. What we should do is maybe actually come out with on a monthly quarter, not monthly, but maybe quarterly, Town Skyler Falls Newsletter.
Let me tell you something really cool. This is getting a little techy, this is, this is the cool part. So, on the new registration page that'll be coming out, there's a tab where people can check for newsletters. Also, there's a checkbox for the text, um, sending out text message notifications to people, so people can actually check that. But if they sign up for the newsletter, if everyone contributes to an article that gets posted on the website, underneath news, so all the articles would be posted underneath the news. Right underneath here. So, every month, if, if everyone or every quarter, if someone contributed, so I, I make a category called Supervisor, a category called Recreation, a category called Clerk. Everyone did that, I can have a newsletter auto-generated and sent out to everyone that has their email. Because it would be, what it does is it takes it from just the articles that you've created. And the, the, there'll be a corner like dedicated on the newsletter that the post from Supervisor for that quarter goes in that top corner. It just fills out and then sends it. So, it's not a lot of hard work. It's literally if we contribute to the website and make the website better by putting the articles there, things like that auto-generated. That's the power.
So is there any way like, like, and I'm not picking on Mike, he's, he's old school like me, like, if he didn't wanna sit there and type out everything he's gonna do in, uh, month of June and July, if he called you and said, "Could you put this as part of my newsletter?" And told you all the information that he'd like to put in there, could you do that for him?
That's actually been the best way, like, like the job postings and stuff like this, that's what we've done. Yes. And, and I would, and I, if, if she's willing as an intern to also give out her phone number, and she wants to do it, she can easily create this content just as fast.
For you to have the PDF, yeah.
I, i- it is, but.
Well, yeah, I understand.
I think it'd be a lot more professional and.
I was, now, important thing to note, I'm not an English major, nor am I a copywriter. I, if you get some North Country dialect in there, if I write it down, you're just gonna have to forgive me.
People understand you. Yeah, it's country.
Right. You know, people have said it's not legalese, it's not, you know, polished. She's much better with English, so I'll definitely put that off her. But yeah.
I, I like it.
And, but all, just phone call, phone call. I, I will answer. I mean, seldom do I not answer, and then if I don't answer, within five minutes, if you, actually usually like a minute, I'm usually on the phone, trying to get someone off the phone. Then I call you right back. Um, there, there was a, I think it's two or three times where that went on excessively long. And that, there is something that happened. What I also can say, a- and this is, this is, what, what I've, when we signed that or agreed, approved the contract that, that night, what did I, I, I begged? Not to, not to make everything an emergency like at the same day. And I wish I, I could say that, not everything is, by all means, not everything. But it's required me to get things out within hours. And that, that can be a challenge. I, I give a four-hour window for my hardware, cause I own an IT company as well, that's the other part of my business. And I have to respond within four hours to broken hardware. So, I need plus four hours to actually get things done.
That's a tough thing we're working with government, because I'll tell you what, and you know it. Sometimes we're working on the agenda an hour before the meeting, trying to get as many resolutions in as we can, because unfortunately, the way government set off, we have 12 days a year that we can actually complete work, get resolutions voted on and do business. So sometimes, I mean, we're worried up to the, the hour. Um, so, I mean, what we do is, uh, and what I've been doing is giving you four or five hours prior to the 24-hour deadline for the agendas. But I always, to fix that, I always put that little disclaimer on the bottom. So any other, you know, pregnant business that may apply, that way I'm not held to just X, Y, Z resolutions. I mean, we try to be as transparent as we can, but, um, I, I usually do wait till 24 hours before the meeting. I usually give you about four hours before 24 hours, but, um, like I say, because I, I never know what's gonna come up and what we need to add to it, so.
If, two things we can do. One, with Rachel helping, she will be monitoring the email, and i- if she's willing. And get right on top of this stuff, within hopefully an hour to two hours. I will also be monitoring my email still. If we can work, and I'm asking a lot, if we can work to get it in the morning of, then that's fine. But also, we are now setting the expectation that I now know they're coming. I, as discussed before, I thought, and, and no one's, no one that I knew, knew said otherwise, that it wasn't possible to give things 20 to 48 hours prior to being posted. That in emergency situ- situations, we could do it. Wipe that out, that's fine. Now there's the expectation, now I know. Things were just hitting me, you know, get it up by 6:00 PM. We're good. We can do this. I, I can do this. Now I have the expectation that I will see something. I'm hoping we can just get it like noon. By, by noon, send it to me. That gives me good time.
And he could tell you, I make him send me a snapshot, which I, I got now on the show that it's out, but like, cause I got burned a couple times and we had to phone phone meetings or cancel meetings, and I can't hide that.
I've heard.
Uh, isn't there a resolution or something on the books that, I'm, I'm directing this to Donna? Uh, as far as resolutions, isn't there something that says like you have to have them by noon or something?
And that's why that disclaimer goes on too, but you're absolutely right. It's about up till noon.
Up till noon, so.
That's why some of his didn't get on.
Yeah, so if, if we have a resolution, all the board members, uh, if you can get it to her by noon, we can get it to you. Communication, it sounds to me, and again, I'm a new guy on the board here, it sounds to me like communications is everything. So, communicate to Donna, Donna communicates with you, and Kevin communicates with you, and everything should be there on a timely fashion.
We try.
Yeah. But I maybe, maybe knowing that, we can all work a little harder.
Communication is important in, in all aspects of this government down here, but like I said, there's, there's, we've had our growing pains. I mean, you know, we not always agreed on certain things. And like I said, there were several different times we had set up for trainings and they just never transpired. Um, there were a couple of, like I said, I know three times you've been down here alone taking photos and getting information and all those things and that I've just never seen them on the website, and that's where I would get frustrated, because I said, you know, I'm not a tech guy. I can't program the crap in there, I'll tell you that right now. I could, you know, I could type on a computer, I can scan, I can send you a PDF, or I could send you, you know, something. I can send you a PDF or I can send you, you know, something type of stuff on, from a Word document. I have no problem doing that. But yeah, I just, I think everybody was frustrated with how long it was taking to get something that was resembled what a town website should look like. Not just, okay, I, I need this up by such, such a date, you know what I mean? And, and then we see that, you know, basically cut face it on them. You know what I mean? And then nothing until I got to do it again. So I just felt like, unfortunately, like I said, uh, uh, you know, I had my frustrations. I've tried to keep it to a, you know, a minimum.
Understood.
But I, I'm, I'm taking a lot, not only from the board, but from the residents of the town who, you know, feel that that website should be more of what it is and they're well deserving of it, you know, so.
So.
You know, and I'm not, I'm saying that for myself, I'm, I'm pretty busy. So, you know, if something fell through the cracks on my end, then let me know. You know what I mean? Hey, I need X, Y, Z to continue with whatever I'm working on for the rec department. I need this to continue with Mike's highway or, or so that I can get you access to, yeah, screening, you know, document and popping it up there on the screen. So I make sure it's up there. Um, here's what you gotta do. And I asked you a couple of times for that too. And I'm glad that you didn't bum over work with that and get that process so that we're not so dependent on you. And, and like I said, I really feel that being that we're paying for the website, that we should have at least one or two officers down here with the credentials to actually do that. I'm not going to go in there and try to do a webpage. I won't do that. But it would be nice to add again what I need to do and not even have to bother you. And, and or if I'm doing, uh, you know, supervising message for the month, you know, this is what happened this month. Or this is what's coming up, you know?
I, I would love that. That, that, you have the ability to do that. So we can, we can do that. Quick question. For the next, say, I don't know, three work sessions, is it possible for me to not take this long? I apologize. But come with updates? And if anyone has any concerns or questions, like over the next three work sessions, can we really tighten this up and actually, you can let me know if there's problems or concerns, basically over the next month and a half.
I mean, I'm, I'm only one on the board. I will tell you that honestly, we got to the point where we're looking at switching something over by February if it hadn't changed. Um, so I, I, I like what I hear. I want to make sure that it is delivered, if you understand what I'm saying. Um, but I'm willing to myself, I'm willing to say, okay, if you're promising this in front of God and everybody and you're willing to try to do that. Um, but this board feels like they want it more forward.
You know, like you say, work sessions and that's great, but I feel.